Welcome to week three of our book study on practicing our faith by Dorothy Bass. Faith takes practice, and if we are to follow Jesus, we have to practice what he taught. Tonight, we focus on chapter five, saying yes and saying no. Joining us are Catherine Harrison, Director of Admissions at the Walker School, and Reverend Joe Bryce, our Associate for Pastoral Care. There are a few people have joined us already online. We welcome you to the conversation tonight. We're excited that you'll be part of it. If at any time you have a question, I invite you to type your questions and comments into the meeting chat or into the comments on Facebook Live, and we'll get to as many of those as we can.
Catherine and Joe, I'm so glad that both of y'all are here with us tonight. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being willing to share your wisdom with us. Last week, as some of y'all know, we dealt with the second chapter of the book, honoring the body, and that chapter had a lot to do with physical health. Tonight, we'll focus more on like boundaries, busyness, decision making. So still health, but not physical health, a different kind of health. Cassie, as you read the chapter, what were a couple of key points or themes that kind of stuck out to you?
Two, two things stuck out the most, and that was this tension between saying yes and saying no. So on one hand, saying no is a practice deeply embedded in Christian tradition. We know John the Baptist lived in the desert. He rejected normal clothes and normal food. In Luke chapter four, Jesus goes into the desert as well to fast and to pray, also rejecting, you know, contact with normal society, at least for that time. So throughout Christianity, these aren't the only people. Throughout Christianity, there are women and men of faith that follow these footsteps, and we often refer to them as ascetics. Julian of Norwich is a famous one. She barricaded herself inside a cell. She had only bread and water, and she was known for her visions. Before Francis of Assisi stood in solidarity with the poor, he was the heir to a wealthy merchant. He had fancy clothes and everything he could want, but both he and Julian chose to live very simply. So they are good examples of people who have said no in dramatic ways, maybe in ways that are far too challenging for us to imagine, you know, as a practice of saying no, rejecting the world, if you will. They did it to the extreme. On the other hand, we have this practice of saying yes that's also part of Christian tradition. So over and over in Scripture, we're told to be generous, to give to those in need, to be good stewards of what we have. We are also called to practice kindness and share love, and these are all ways that we say yes to a life of faith. So for some, it feels like it's more about saying no. For Francis and Julian of Norwich, they said no to a lot so that they could say yes to some extraordinary life experiences that they felt called to. But I think all of us are called to say no to some things so that we can say yes to where God is calling us. So my, I guess my summary of the chapter is really that navigating between yes and no requires discernment, and we get that discernment through prayer. I liked what the author described. It reminded me of an examined prayer, and it's a prayer where you listen for how the Holy Spirit is prompting you. We could, we could say there's five movements to this prayer. You become aware of God's presence. You review your day with gratitude. Pay attention to what you're feeling, where you feel conflicted. Choose a decision and pray for discernment over that, and then thank God for the gift of wisdom and guidance. So this method of prayer and this idea that prayer could be a vehicle for discerning and walking that line between the yeses we give and the nos we need to give, that struck me as a way forward from this chapter, a practice that we could, we could really use and adopt. So how do we live intentionally into God's calling? We spend time in prayer, and not just any kind of prayer, but prayer that enables us to listen. And by listening, we begin to discern better where we need to be and where we don't need to be.
That's a, I mean, that's kind of an interesting take on prayer. Cassie, this is something, is this, is this kind of a chapter that hits you close to home? You preached a beautiful sermon just a couple of weeks ago where you artfully talked about how important it is to say no.
Yeah, I think for me, it's hard, it's hard to know. Well, I'll put it this way. I want to say yes to everything. I get excited about everything for at least for five minutes, maybe 10 minutes. And so sometimes I'll find myself saying yes because I think that's a great idea, but the question is, is it a great idea for me? Am I the right person? It could still be a worthwhile thing that needs to happen, and maybe, but maybe my support is what's needed, not, or my enthusiasm for other people to step into that is what's needed, not my actual hands-on action. So yeah, the part that struck me was the having the wisdom, the patience, maybe the courage just to say no and be really, really careful about your yeses. And what I, what I've learned in my life is that there are moments when it's really clear that the right answer is yes. And, and you know, sometimes a yes is demanding. We might talk a little bit more about that, but sometimes we know we should say yes to something, and in that moment, we also recognize the sacrifice that it requires and all the nos that have to go along to make that yes successful. So I just thought that was really interesting and a challenge. I always, I feel like I've dealt with my whole life.
Yeah, yeah, I think a lot of people can relate to that. We have, we have two people with us who said yes to giving up a chunk of their Wednesday night. Catherine and Joe, in order to say yes to be in here with us tonight, what do you say no to? In order to say yes to be in here, what did you have to miss out on?
Well, I said no to cooking dinner, so that was easy.
Yes.
It's not a Taco Tuesday, but it's tacos on Wednesday night. Cause so that part was easy. But I think I was pretty honest with you, Joe, when I said, let me check the calendar because if we had had soccer games tonight, I likely would have said no. I've got a senior, and I'm trying to soak up all those last times under the lights, and I got a junior who's also playing. So I just, I really think, Cassie, about what you say, saying no to something. So when you do say yes, it feels joyful and not as dutiful because there are the bullet points that come with it, but being able to find the joy in saying yes.
Catherine, you, so you and Chris and Tate and Janie live right around the corner from us. So like, I have perspective into your house. I know when you take down your Christmas tree, like I know what's going on.
Down in February, yeah.
And I, I mean, I've noticed that about y'all. Like, it seemed like you, going into this year, Tate's a senior, Janie's a junior. For the second half of high school, being there for our kids is going to be the priority. Is that, you made that as a conscious decision, it seems like.
Absolutely, and it's been so fun. I don't, you know, it doesn't feel like an obligation. I don't want to miss out on anything, and some of it's behind the scenes stuff. But it's, but it's been really fun to be present because, you know, every night we do, everybody says goodnight usually because we have another second dinner. I don't know about your family, but around 10 o'clock. So clean up again, and I don't want to miss a hug. I don't want to miss a moment. I don't want to miss an important question. So, all right, Joe Bryce, what'd you say no to tonight?
Uh, tonight, I said no to a more peaceful work experience tomorrow. I said no to a half-day off tomorrow to travel to South Georgia.
Yeah.
I said no to being with Sandra and maybe watching The Crown.
All right, okay. That's a big deal. So you're saying you're watching.
But I'm okay with it. I'm not mad with you, Joe.
Thank you, but I mean, we want to know. I want to know what you have to give up in order to be here with us. Thank you for making that sacrifice.
I'll survive it.
Yeah, well.
I'm enjoying this.
What does it feel? I asked that question to start, just to illustrate the point. In order to say yes to be in here, y'all had to say no to something else. That's just kind of how it goes. A line in the book that underlined is on page 60. "We must learn the act of saying no to that which crowds God out, and yes to a way of life that makes space for God."
Yeah.
If you were to look back on the last year and all that we've given up in this year of pandemic, what's something you said no to in the last year that helped give you more space to experience God?
In so many ways, for me, it's been a blessing to have limits. You can't go into work. You can't get with this group. You can't do that. And that has really given both Sandra and me because she, she retired in the middle of this. And so then, if I was still, you know, in the mode I was in, I would have missed her six months of her retirement. So it's been a blessing in many ways. It's, it's taught me that I can make that space and survive it.
Man, right. Catherine?
It's such a weird year for everybody, but working in a school. So there have been some nos personally, which again, you find the blessings in those. As Joe said, you know, we talked about this year's Christmas season. It was very different. There weren't parties. We weren't dressing up. We didn't even get together extended family. My mom's got 15, you know, my mom said that I have 15 grandkids, and they're like, listen, they're on six different college campuses. No, nobody's coming over. So we didn't do Big Kyber's Christmas, which was a loss. But you know, there were other pieces that were quieter and just the four of us, and those were special. So personally, I feel like there have been some nos that have made space for more quiet time and reflection. Professionally, it's not really been a year where you can say no. You know, we're here early for temp screens. We're, we got a vaccine fair tomorrow that we're setting up for tonight and things like that. But it feels like the theme for the school year has been, absorb as much of the chaos for the kids as you can so that they can experience community in the way that we know that they need it. So, you know.
So you've made some sacrifices to try to protect the kids.
Well, everybody has. I mean, it's not, but you know, so there've been, you know, extensions other places, but it also feels good to be part of a group, just like our church family, to be part of Friday night, which by the way, was so fun.
Yes, good, good. I thought it was fun, too.
But, so again, just looking for blessings along the way.
I have a question. Just as we're, we're talking about how, how much we say no to, and Catherine, you're talking about what you've absorbed. You felt you had to say yes to certain things because of the times we're in. This chapter talks about a lot of folks, it already summarized it, walked away from normal life and said no to so much. So Francis of Assisi, Dorothy Day adopted a life of voluntary poverty. Both of these folks said no to so much. Why do you think we say yes to so much today? I know that it's a weird time, but outside of this weird time, do you see this happening in your own life and your lives of your peers?
I don't, Joby, I don't know if you want to go first.
Hey, I'm a pastor. You know, I can't say no.
Yeah, three, three preachers and a teacher. This isn't intimidating at all.
Um, so what the, so why is it hard to say no? Is that the question, Cassie?
Or I guess, what are the reasons we say yes? Like, what's driving?
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Got it. Well, first thing is our culture. We live in the tyranny of too many choices. And now we, we have the technology, and frankly, we have the wealth. We have the flexibility with schedules a lot, and it's, it's just too many choices. I remember my kids were in soccer, and they were on two different teams. I'm thinking, why are they on two different teams? And so we got to go to, you know, like four games a week instead of two, and some of them at the same time. We just have so many choices that it's really hard to say no, and they're good choices. They're wonderful choices. Sure, I'd like to play piano. I'd like to go to volleyball. I'd, you know, all of that's wonderful. But I've learned that I just can't do everything I love to do. I would love to do that, and I do love to do those things. But there's a tyranny of too many choices in our culture. So that's culturally, personally. You know, when Jesus says, let your yes be yes and your no be no. I didn't study that passage. I may get it wrong, Cassie.
Doubt it.
When, when I look at that and I think all the yeses that I say without nos, my yeses become maybes. I can't really give myself to them. And my mind's wandering, you know, man, what am I doing here? What did I, what did I get myself into here? So it becomes a maybe. I can't really engage it. And that really, when my boundaries are unhealthy, I'm saying yes to unhealthy level of engagement. Joe and Cassie, you know Edwin Friedman, who, you know, was a Murray Bowen disciple and did a lot with boundaries. And he explained boundaries to, to a group I was with, with him. And he said, you know, boundaries, and he used to, he used to jump genres. He would be talking about religion, and all of a sudden, he'd show you a group of maps and how those maps came to be. And then, so he's talking boundaries, and all of a sudden, he'd be talking about cell biology. And he explained that the boundaries are like a healthy cell. The membrane is semi-permeable. So you can't shut everything out with a no, and you can't let everything in with a yes. It's that your yes be yes and your no be no, and that way it could be more healthy. So that's, that's personally what I struggle with is my, my poor boundaries, my unhealthy boundaries. Of course, the bottom of that is, yeah.
I forgot, can I, I want to jump in there. You've shared this with me before, that, that a cell without any boundaries is just like, everything's everywhere, like.
It can exist, yeah, it cannot live.
That without some sense of boundary, there's, there's lack of existence. And I think, you know, some of us, I hadn't thought about the way wealth plays into this, but we can, some of us can afford more, like we can afford to travel more. We, my kids are playing sports now that I don't think they existed when I was a kid. Lacrosse, no, we knew what lacrosse was, but like we can.
It existed, Joe, just not in Georgia.
All right, but we can spread ourselves so, so thin that we can become like cells without a cell wall, without a boundary. That's a beautiful image. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and so the question below that is, okay, well, I have to have semi-permeable boundaries. I know what that looks like, but why can't I get there? Well, for me, it's, it's fear. It's the fear of being rejected if I say no. It's the fear of missing out on something that I really want to do. It's the fear of missing out on something that everybody else is doing. So I think basically, at the bottom of those unhealthy boundaries is, is a fear. Comes from a low, I don't know. We don't have good integrity as a human being, and so we're fearful without enough, you know, identity to say no and mean it and stick to it. It's a fear thing. I've got some homework for you about that.
Well, and I think for me, it's the cultural piece that we're supposed to be good at all of it. Not just as women, all of us. We're supposed to have our Christmas tree down by the, by January, not have it up.
St. Patrick's Day.
Groundhog's Day, for example. Or we're supposed to be this kind of parent or, you know, and for us, early on, our kids were young, and my dad got sick and passed away. And then right after that, Chris got sick, and he's doing well. He's doing great, but we kind of publicly fell apart and needed a lot of help. And I think it was one of the best things to ever happen to us. For my kids to know they had all these other parents in our neighborhood, you know, they're calling their other mothers, Mary Margaret, Marjorie, their, their church family, their school family was such a gift, and it was a relief. I didn't, I no longer had to be good at everything. I wasn't going to be the mom to make the gingerbread house. Mary Margaret was. I was not going to be the person that died the Easter eggs with them. That again was Mary Margaret, but I could take all the kids camping. There are things I'm good at. And so that was really freeing because I think we miss living in community. We miss living in that village, and so you got to create it. You got to find it.
We, we have this sense, I think Nicodemus is the lectionary passage for this Sunday. Nicodemus goes to Jesus, and he's worried about, he goes to see Jesus at night because he doesn't want anybody to know that he's sneaking off. It's like he's sneaking off to get help. It's like he's afraid to show the physician that he's hurt. It's like he, we, I think we all fear our own incompleteness. But there's, I agree, there's such like, revealing our limitation is liberating because there's, it enables people to like, help us, to love us. I love that. Mary Margaret, Mary Margaret is the other mom who does gingerbread houses.
Yeah, I got lots of them. I got Melissa, I mean, and I got all of them and lots in the church and lots outside the church, and that is such a gift.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, part of that joy, Catherine, is that you know you are loved. And I think to get at that fear, how you deal with it, I'm going to get preachy, but if you know that Jesus Christ is your Savior, and if you know that God loves you, that helps with a lot of that fear.
Yes, yes, yes. Y'all, do you think this, we got a question here from Debbie Smith. Do y'all think that fear comes out in churches?
That's why we're in church. That's why I'm a preacher.
Yeah. Because you couldn't say no to being a preacher?
Right.
I'm glad you said yes to being a preacher.
What would people think if I quit? It's there.
Yeah, it's there.
I think that was so neat to see the group of officers, of which I wasn't rolling off or rolling on. I was just there actually to be with Janie and to know that I have served before and I hope to serve again. But there are all these other incredible people that are so gifted and so talented and, and, and to lean on each other and to celebrate each other. I mean, it was, I'm so grateful for the ways, not only you all within the church, but our whole church family has held things together for the last, it's got to be a year.
If we know we're loved, it really helps with those boundaries. I know I can say no to these people because they have loved me so well.
Yes, okay, okay, let's go there. Let's go there. Catherine, you had to, you had to enter some difficult territory. You had to implement some serious boundaries to protect kids at Walker School. You're a part, you, you weren't, you're Director of Admissions, so maybe you weren't the one who had to decide on the boundary, but you were a part of implementing these difficult boundaries, saying no to in-person classes for a time, saying yes to face masks, all these big challenges. Tell us about what helped that difficult news to become well-received? Like, what, what did you have to do? What enabled you to communicate these new rules to the kids and student, to the, to the kids and parents of the Walker School?
Well, there are so many levels, and I think first, we have an incredible health and safety committee. So the head of our science department is a microbiologist. She teaches epidemiology. She leads our partnership with the CDC. So she already had made so many deposits with families as far as teaching their kids well, caring for their kids well. You know, so when Emily spoke, everybody listened. So that was very helpful. But leadership-wise, from our head of school to assistant head, everybody, we sat down and said, this is going to be about cultivating trust because there's no way we're going to come to consensus. Everybody's got a lot of feelings around all of this.
Yes.
We can answer the hard questions by going back to what's best for kids and using the data we have in a loving way to get there. But, and knowing that people are going to have all sorts of feelings and letting them express, I think, is important. I mean, you all dealt with it with the church, too. I know everybody had an opinion about what you should do and how you should do it.
We did, and it was hard, and I kept getting, you know, I kept getting mad, like, I want the, I want everybody to be mad at the governor or the president. I want somebody else to set this boundary for me. I don't want the church to have to set it. I don't want to be the bad guy who says no to all these things that people love. But like you, you're talking about, there's a relationship there with the Walker School, and there's like expertise, and there's data. All of these things enabled the difficult decisions to be a little bit easier, a little bit more palatable, that kind of the way you said it, Joe, was you can say no when you know you're loved. You can set a boundary when you know there's trust. You can, or when there's, you can't make everyone happy, but you can make it through a difficult decision if, if there's a relationship there. I think that's a beautiful idea that I hadn't, that hadn't really become crystal clear until we're talking about it right now. Catherine, this is just sort of a random question. Who, who adapted more easily, the kids or their parents?
Oh, kids, always kids.
Yes, totally.
For real, 100%?
Yeah, I mean, with, absolutely, every time.
What, why? Why do you think?
I think too, well, there was, the kids are resilient. And I mean, I'll, rather than talking about someone else's child, I'll use an example from our kitchen. And so last spring, about this time, and you have Chris Harrison going, what do you mean? We're not having soccer. What do you mean? We're not going to Savannah? And I said, this is about to get really big, and this can be a little bit bigger than the soccer trip to Savannah, Chris. So just hold on.
Yeah.
Because Emily had us in meetings prepping for this. I didn't know how big. I thought we were, you know, everyone, the two-week, three-week shutdown, but. And Tate finally said, Dad, we can get upset about everything we're missing out on, or we can just be grateful for everything that we're going to get to do.
Tate said that?
Yeah, especially when it started seeping into his senior year, you know, and he's like, and I just looked, and of course, I'm such a no at all. I'm looking at Chris one, you know. But I think all of them.
Marty Moore loves Tate, Catherine.
Marty Moore, oh, he loves you, Miss Marty. All the Harrisons love Miss Marty.
There's, there's another child in our church whose mom was like, are you okay? How are you handling all this? And she was like, well, I'm okay. And Frank had it a lot worse. How about that from perspective?
Nothing like some perspective, so.
Something about shut down. Man.
Yeah, but I think, you know, and you're, it's always worse, I think, when something happens to someone you care about. So it's just parents. I get it. They're just being protective of their kids and their kids' experiences and not wanting it matter. So I get it, but.
Thank you.
Could I jump in and just ask the same, kind of similar question from a different angle? I'm just curious. This is like, this one, you weren't, you weren't ready to hear. I hope I don't catch you off guard. Have you ever said no, thought it was a big deal, and no one cared? That's happened to me. I'm just wondering, you know, how often we work ourselves up?
Yeah, yeah.
And for me, that's ego a little bit, in my case. Cause I'm like, well, how in the world will this happen? If, if I don't say yes and I don't step up to help in X, Y, and Z, how will it happen? Well, it happens just fine.
Yep.
Get over it. Yeah. And it, yeah, that is an interesting point, Cassie. And that's kind of freeing, too. It's all going to be. Everybody taking one step forward versus one person feeling they've got to sprint from here to there. makes a big difference, so.
Well, I, I guess, to, I guess, well, we're still talking about the pandemics. I guess we've talked about this a little bit, but what, what do you think has been good for our souls and our children's souls during this time? Like what, what are you? You had to summarize what you're hoping you'll bring out of this, what you're hoping your families bring out of this. What would that be?
They are resilient. They, they are ended up much more resilient than, than previous generations in many past probably. I've noticed that. I went to a high school graduation and the principal just went through all the things. Not only the pandemic, but all the things that our young people experience, hear, deal with, worry about, and told them, you are amazing to live through this and be so resilient. Here you are. You're sane, you're helpful people. Thank God for you. They're resilient.
I, I agree. I think we've been forced to slow down. I think there's a greater sense of community. I think they're not taking things for granted. I've never been thanked so much at the end of a class or end of a practice or car, car line. Uh, uh, kids are really grateful.
Yeah.
Um.
Incredible. It's just, it's incredible. And but I mean, I guess we kind of know that, like, we, we, we think that, um, some, sometimes we parents think that we're loving our kids when we, um, give them things. When we give them whatever they ask for or whatever they want. But, um, sometimes it's when they are a little bit limited that they become more grateful and appreciative. Joe, the, um, this is a question, this is a change of pace here. Um, but it's, this is a question directed straight at you. Um, I'll never forget, I don't think I'll forget for as long as I live. Um, seeing you and having to hear you say at your son's funeral, right at the graveside, that you'd love to hug everyone there, uh, but you can't.
Yeah.
Um, uh, you had to say no to hugs at your son's funeral.
Now, I tried to find, I tried to find a loving way to say that. And what I ended up saying was, the thing that's, one of the things that really hurts me today is I can't hug you. And they heard it.
Yeah.
Well, two of them didn't, but I just gave them the hand.
Joe, what, what, you had to say no to hugs, but, um, what's helped? Where have you, where have you seen God elsewhere?
And, and tell me a little bit more about what you're asking.
We, you know, this is kind of circling back to the beginning. Sometimes we say, when we say no, we're making room for God to work in our lives in new ways. You had to say no to something and I know it hurt you and it hurt me to watch you say it. But how has, how has God shown up in the space left?
Oh, oh my goodness. Uh, telephone calls. I got a stack of cards this high. Uh, now I've got two stacks. I've got the damp stack that I've read and the dry stack that I haven't read yet. Uh, because they're so touching. Um, so that, that's something that filled that hole that the no left. I, I, I still, I mean, I still feel people's love in remarkable ways. But not all hugs are the same anyway, you know?
That's true. Yeah.
Hey, I got, I got some tips on saying no.
All right, Joe, let's hear your tip.
These are like trade secrets I'm sharing with you.
It's like Dave Letterman, he's getting out of top ten.
And now there's like 10 attendees out here and you're gonna know it when you hear it from me that I'm about to say no, or I just did. So, oh, there's a, I call it a knowing voice. It's not an N-O voice, it's a K-N-O-W-I-N-G, knowing voice. Uh, it's like, you know, the, the light is on. You know, the light is on. Look at the light and tell me if it's on or off. Tell me, tell me the light is on. Tell me, come on, tell me.
It's on.
The light is on.
The light is on.
Right. The door is closed.
The door is closed.
The car is tanned.
The car is tanned.
I will not be able to help you with that.
I will not be able to help you with that.
You see, it's just, I know that light's on and it's going to come in my voice and my energy. And I know I'm not going to be able to help you with that. There's, there's no permission. It's, it's like, uh, would it be okay if I just set this one out? No. I regret it, but I will not be able to help you with that.
Yeah.
Just that tone of voice, remember tone of voice. And then you remember that when you're telling your kids to pick up their clothes, pick up the clothes, put them in the tamper, pick up your clothes, put them in the hamper. It's not, pick them up, you know, or okay, pick them up, okay? No. Just, you know, they need to be in the hamper and you know the light's on. Uh, this came up, uh, at, uh, at First Presbyterian here, when the staff, we were getting inundated, inundated with good ideas.
Yes.
And we were saying yes to everything.
Right.
And it was driving us crazy, driving everybody crazy. And it was so hard to say no to a good idea. And it was even hard to say yes, but to a good idea. You didn't want to, you know, you wanted to respect it. And you didn't want to dampen anybody's enthusiasm. And so we, it just kind of came out, uh, well, we can say yes and, yes, that's a great idea and, and then you can go through the things that need to happen. You can go through the things that you don't think you can, you can handle. Yes, and we'll need someone to do that. And yes, and we'll find how to get this done. Yes, and we'll need to keep it safe. Yeah, you know, it, it's not really talking anybody out of anything, it's just pointing out what's there that needs to be overcome. And you don't say yes and just leave the how open. That you gotta do it all.
Yeah.
So that was something, yes, and. Uh, another one, and, oh, I hate to, I hate to share this one because it's such a, such a good one. I'll need to check my calendar.
Oh, that's a good one.
And you go check it.
Right.
You really do. Uh, but it gives you time to think. It gives you time, um, to make a choice. And you can point out truthfully, and I have, that I have another commitment. It may be to my family.
Yeah.
It may be to self-care. It, you know, but those are important commitments. And if you feel that needs to be there, just, I, I've, I've checked and I just have another commitment for that afternoon or for that evening or whatever. Uh, so if I tell you I'm gonna check my calendar, sorry.
Those are awesome. Joe, you got one more, we're running low on time.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, if you say no to someone, it leaves room for someone to say yes. Even if you don't know who it would, who it would be. Because I've seen people step into the hole and really shine and get a blessing. And the other thing I want you to know is a, a wise counselor told me, no, Joe, remember, no is a sentence.
No is an entire sentence, huh?
It's a no is a, is a sentence. So anyway, that's all I got.
I love it, Joe. Last, here's, here's the last question and then, and then we're gonna kind of wrap it up. Uh, i- i- in, in the, in the art of saying yes and no, how do you think we can help people say yes to getting a vaccine?
Well, he's kind of busy, but I think Doc Knox can convince anybody to do anything.
Send in the Doc Knox, that's how we do it.
Well, I do, you know, someone they trust that understands them from a faith perspective, also understands the science and understands the health benefits. I mean, I, I, finding someone that can speak on all three levels, I think.
Yeah.
And it doesn't always have to be Doc Knox, but he sure is a great.
Yeah.
Go-to.
The main point I keep thinking about is, you know, uh, Jesus says, love God and love your neighbor. And how are you really gonna love your neighbor if you're carrying a, you know, a virus around? Or are you gonna make your family care for you while you got it? Or, you know, whatever.
Oh.
This, get the vaccine and love your neighbor.
Just get the vaccine and love your neighbor. Saying no to COVID, saying yes to your loving your neighbor. Y'all, this has been wonderful. Cassie, this has been a really helpful conversation for me. As our time together kind of wraps up, what are you gonna take away from this fruitful conversation?
Hmm, uh, there's goodness that comes out of being limited. It's important to have boundaries. Um, there's some resiliency that's come out of the last year. Um, our kids are teaching us what it really means to, uh, what's really important in life. You know, being able to be flexible and say, okay, uh, because where I think, you know, parents may have hopes for what it could be, kids haven't had it yet. So they're like, well, this is my senior year or this, you know, this is just what, what, what's coming to us. And, and maybe as adults, we can recapture, you know, for the adults, we could learn from that. Um, but that's really, that's kind of a beautiful witness to, to notice and to see. Um, you can say no, you have permission to say no, and you have permission to say yes to the things that are scary. Some, some of those people on the opposite side are too timid, um, to embrace where they really feel that they, they need to go. Um, I don't think that God calls us to work ourselves into the ground. Um, just a second, I'm having a visitor.
Case in point.
I'm having a visitor. Uh, lucky no one has come in yet because I've heard them outside the entire time we've been doing this. Um, we're, okay, yeah, you can say no, you can also say yes. Give yourself permission to, to know which one you need to say. And part of the way we do that is through prayer. Um, God doesn't cause to work ourselves into the ground. Uh, we, you know, we're, we're all picking up the table together. We're not trying to hold, you know, you pick it up by yourself, you, you hurt your back. So don't hurt your back, like, like that's where Jesus wants us to be. Um, so, and, and that goes for church work, that goes for personal life, that goes for, for all areas of life. That, that's what came through. And I appreciate Joe Bryce's list of ways to say no. And all, and just a reminder, no is a sentence. You don't have to qualify, you don't have to give the list of commitments you do have. You're not being judged, you, you know, and, and sometimes we get afraid that if we say no, it's, that person's going to feel something or we, we feel like we have to be responsible for their feelings about our no. Um, and, and what, what I've found more often than not is when I say no, I've worked myself into a place that does, it, no one cares. Like, they might care for a minute, but they really don't care. Everyone moves on and sometimes I, I think often better things come of it when, when you say no at the right time. So, um, I thought of homework too. Uh, I, I guess there, there's, there's two types of homework. So depending on, on where you are, uh, on this, first, one homework is, just give yourself permission to say no to one thing every day this week. I mean, write it down on a piece of paper. Just say no, say no to things you care about, say no to things you don't care about. Uh, sometimes it, it's helpful just to practice it, especially if you're not good at it. Make that boundary. And then, once you learn how to hold that boundary firm, you get, you start to be able to navigate, okay, what comes in, what goes out. And then the, the second, the second, uh, place that my mind went is if you feel like you're, you're pretty good at, uh, what comes in, what goes out and defending your, you know, defending your time and your space, maybe practice that exam and prayer, um, and thinking of, of, or, or really practicing discerning more clearly, making sure that you're, you're lining up to where, where you feel that God is leading you. Um, I think that's the next step in, in really living faithfully. So thank you all for being with us tonight. Um, really appreciate Joe and Catherine and all their experiences. It's been a great conversation. We'll be back next week with a discussion on chapter six, keeping Sabbath. I feel like this session sort of lays the foundation for that session. Um, and until then, we, we pray that God will be with you, will be blessing you and giving you all peace.